Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I would like to call this meeting to order. Couple of quick housekeeping items. Please silence all cell phones. And in an effort to make sure we have sufficient time to hear from everyone in the audience, if you do come forward to speak, please identify yourself and state your name and address for the record. And limit your comments to five minutes. And also ensure that you're delivering new testimony for the commissioners. So with that, Denise, can you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of April 5th, 2017, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, April Platts. Item three, 6360, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District located at 7800 West 60th Street. Item four, 6581, 2017, rezoned from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I1 Light Industrial District located at 5501 North Quarry Avenue. Item five, 6586, 2017, rezoned from the AG Agriculture District to the S1 General Institutional District located at 4300 Northwestport Avenue. Item six, 6373, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Galway Park Edition Phase 5 located at 7800 West 60th Street. Item seven, 6594, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Dolly Farm Village Edition located north of East 26th Street and west of Veterans Parkway.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself for the consent.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this point, are there any objections from anyone in the audience regarding our consent agenda items number one through seven? Commissioners or staff, any objections? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. If anyone in the audience is here for items one through seven, feel free to leave at And we'll move forward into the regular agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. First, we need to have a motion to approve the regular agenda.
They're moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the regular agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Regular agenda is approved.
Item eight, 6516, 2017, conditional use for a car wash within 250 feet of a DD or AD form located at 1731 South Cliff Avenue.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Building Services. This is an application by Eric Willardson. The owner is proposing to raise the existing Holiday Gas Station at the corner of 26th and Cliff Avenue and utilize the existing and adjacent parcels to construct a new Holiday Gas Station with an attached car wash, as you can see here on the concept plan. The proposed gas station with attached car wash meets the comprehensive plan. Although the car wash will be adjacent to seven houses to the west across South 10th Avenue, six of those are owned by Avera McKinnon. And the future use of these single-family homes to the west will be part of the Avera McKinnon Main Campus, which is major institutional. Further, a Level C buffer yard will be required along that west property line adjacent to South 10th Avenue. The proposed six-foot screen fence and significant landscaping should screen the proposed car wash from the current single-family residential homes to the west. Finally, the entrance and exit to the car wash are directed to the north and south and away from the single-family homes to the west. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the nature and location of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason on this? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Eric Willardson, Willardson London Engineering here on behalf of I-90 Fuel Services, the owners of the project. We were here for the rezoning in front of you here a couple of months ago. And the city council, at both of those meetings, the car wash was part of the plan. We have provided the buffer zone required. Haven't had any negative, I guess, effects or impacts from the neighbors. So I guess, short of that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and address item number Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion for approval.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of item number eight, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number eight is approved.
Item nine, 6553, 2017, conditional use in the DD3 form for family daycare located at 1615 East 6th Street.
Good evening. Diane DeCuyer with Planning Staff. The applicant for this CUP is Sierra Cheddar for Kitty City Daycare. The property is located at 1615 East 6th Street. The property is zoned as RT1 Single Family Traditional, and the applicant is proposing accessory use for family daycare at the residence. The conditional use is required when the applicant is not able to obtain a signed petition by 75% of the adjacent property owners within 250 feet. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval for the conditional use permit with the following stipulations. Adequate outdoor play areas protected by a four-foot barrier such as a fence, wall, berm, or hedge. And two, the zoning permit shall state that a health department license is required before the beginning of operation. I can answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Is Sierra Cheddar here? Then you need to come up and answer questions for the commissioners.
Hi.
Good evening. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Sure. Sierra Cheddar, 1615 East 6th Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57103.
Very good. Sierra, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm just opening an in-home daycare and looking to get a zoning license for that.
Very good.
I'm city and state registered. I brought all my paperwork with me if anybody wanted to take a look, so, yeah.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
I have one. I just wanted to make sure you understood the conditions associated with the conditional use permit in terms of the adequate outdoor play area and the four-foot barrier and the obtaining of a permit.
Yes, I have a fully fenced-in backyard, if that's what you're wondering.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number nine? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion for approval.
Got a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion?
Seems like a pretty good location for this, and I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of item number nine, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number nine passes as amended or as recommended by staff.
Item 10, 6587, 2017, conditional use for kennel and boarding facility located within 1,000 feet of a DD form located at 7121 South Cliff Avenue.
The applicant for this conditional use is Joel Engel with Clemmy Companies for Paws for a Cause Dog Grooming and Kennel. The property is located at 7121 South Cliff Avenue, which is north of East 85th and west of South Cliff Avenue. The property is zoned as C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and the applicant is proposing a 10,000-square-foot building for a dog kenneling and grooming. The CUP is required in the RE2 form to allow a kennel within 1,000 feet from any DD, AD, and MD forms. The rural residential to the south and east are DD forms. The CUP standard is defined that if a kennel includes outdoor kennels, it should be located in areas where the noise generated by the use would not be a nuisance or detrimental to adjacent properties. Other buffers such as walls, berms, and landscaping may be required in separating the kennel operation from adjacent property owners. The plan presented indicates the outdoor play area, excuse me, outdoor play area and pool on the west side of the property behind the building. To the northwest is the Future Highway 100, and to the southwest is Grand Prairie Estates. The site plan indicates the location that's outlined where the kennel is being proposed and the distance to the Grand Prairie Estates. Their loop road is just over 1,000 feet. And then to the east of the proposed kennel location is where some of the rural residential that are the DD forms are located. And also indicated to the northwest is the Future South Dakota Highway 100. We don't know exactly when that might be going in, but it is planned for the future. We have heard from several neighbors, both by phone call and emails, that have some concern regarding the location of the dog kennel. The applicants, Joe Engel and Janine Lubin with Paws for a Cause, are here tonight to address their business plan and discussions they've had with some of the neighbors in the area. Planning Staff does feel that the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the proposed project, and recommends approval of the conditional use permit. I can answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you. Are the petitioners here this evening? Petitioner, excuse me. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joel Engel with Clemmy Companies, 3408 South Secamora Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I want to begin by pointing out that our company is a developer for this neighborhood commercial development. We're also the contractor as proposed for the Paws for Cause project. We also developed the Grand Prairie Estates neighborhood to the southeast. I know there's several residents that are here to speak from that neighborhood. And we also developed the Grand Prairie addition that's just to the west of this site. The reason I'm telling you this is because we have a vested interest in the area. We have a $7.5 million lot inventory that we still have to sell. I would estimate we still have about $20 million worth of homes to build in that subdivision. And the reason I tell you that is because if we thought that there was a concern for property value because of this project, we would have addressed it by not supporting this project. The Paws for Cause is a high-quality project. It's a retail-style building, very well-built, very complimentary to the neighborhood. It's a wooden steel frame structure, very well-insulated, four sides of masonry finish and ephes on the exterior. It's as soundproof as is feasible with this type of construction. Project is designed, as was shown on the site plan, to have an outdoor play area to the west of the building as well as to the north of the building. The only way that that site, that those outdoor play areas can be accessed is through a walk door in the building. The pets have to be let in and let out of the structure by staff, and that'll only occur during regular business hours. I'm going to leave most of the business plan discussion to the owner, Janine Lubins, who's here, but I wanted to just talk about the construction and the site a bit. The site is zoned, C2. It has been zoned for many years, I believe back to 2008. A boarding kennel is a permitted special use in C2. The ordinance is only requiring the conditional use because of those sensitive uses within 1,000 feet. To our knowledge, there are two such uses on the east side of Cliff Avenue. We visited with both of those residents. Dan Lemme and I met with one. That neighbor was very supportive of the project, looked very much forward to this opening so that they have a place to board their pets. They thought it was very complimentary to the area. The owners that are here visited with the other property owner. They indicated their approval for the use, but they did express some concerns for drainage. And I know we don't typically address drainage at this level, but I do want you to know that all of the stormwater from this site is tributary to the city's regional detention pond that's located right there adjacent to the site. I've also fielded several phone calls and several emails from Grand Prairie Estates residents over the past couple of days. I recognize there's several in attendance. We've had several discussions. I feel like that there is some consensus maybe developing as to some concessions or some birmingham landscaping that could possibly be made to help alleviate their concerns. But until we've had a chance to hear their comments, I'm not sure that we're there yet. The baseline concern from the neighborhood residents in this area is noise or potential for noise. We're not actually sure if we have an issue to resolve yet. This is still a perceived issue. Please note, though, that all of the Grand Prairie Estates residents are located more than 1,000 feet from the structure. Some of them that are here are more than 1,500 feet. Some of them are more than 2,000 feet away. Their neighborhood, the Grand Prairie Estates, is surrounded on three sides by a 10- to 16-foot tall berm. That would be the north, the west, and the south sides of the development. And on the east side, it's surrounded, it's lined buffered by a grove of mature trees that are about 25 to 30 feet tall. Those berms, those trees are in place to reflect the noise of what will be Major Arterial Street with 85th Street and with what will be a regional highway with South Dakota 100. When we developed the neighborhood, we took those things into consideration and planned those buffers. I've asked each of these residents that I've talked to for some ideas, for some methods, anything really that could be done that could mitigate their noise concerns. So far, the only constructive comment that I've heard, with the exception of some of the discussion tonight on landscaping, is to consider another site for this project. The owners are going to address a lot of the noise control plan in their business plan here in just a few minutes. But I did bring forth, I brought a couple of photos with me. I thought it was important for you to have a perspective on the distance that exists in between the proposed site and the Grand Prairie Estates development. Are we able to put these up on the projector, maybe? The first photo is the site looking from where the outdoor play area will be back toward the west toward the Grand Prairie Estates development. And I'll keep moving for the sake of time. The second photo that Diane will put up is a shot taken from inside the Grand Prairie Estates development, looking essentially through the grove of trees toward the project Some of the residents have also expressed concern that we gave insufficient notice to their neighborhood, that they haven't had a chance to consider this request. I want you to know we followed exactly as the ordinance has requested of us. We notified those property owners within 1,000 feet, and we've done so, and we've held conversations with anyone that has contacted us about this request. I've reminded these property owners and anybody in the area that the boarding kennel is a special permitted use in C2 District. This site was zoned for this use years before anyone chose to buy and build in this area, with the exception of the two residents to the east and one to the south that's outside of that 1,000-foot distance. That said, all of the homes in the area were constructed after the property was zoned for this use. To wrap up my comments on this, this site is located on an arterial intersection. This is the intersection of Cliff Avenue and South Dakota 100. The site has been identified on the future land use as a neighborhood business park and a neighborhood commercial development. The Grand Prairie Estates and the Grand Prairie neighborhoods are both constructed adjacent to the South Dakota 100 corridor. In fact, that corridor divides those two neighborhoods. This area is going to develop as a commercial development. Traffic is increasing in this area regardless of whether we build this project. Noise is increasing in this area regardless of whether we build this project. And the potential use of this type has not been held secret from anyone in the public by any way. It's been out there in full disclosure through the ordinance for many years. So I'll ask the owners to come up, but I'd be happy to answer any questions first, if you have any.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Could you comment on the landscaping plan and what you would see as additional buffering opportunities?
The resolution that we potentially discussed with some of the neighbors that are here tonight would be to add a four-to-five-foot earth berm. I believe we discussed a five-foot-tall earth berm along the west side of the fence that would be west of the pool area. There's a possibility that the pool area may not be built. Is that fair to say? I mean, it's a consideration. We've included it in our site plan. If we were not to build that, we would move that berm further to the east and place that along the western boundary of the fence that is the outdoor runs on the west side of the building. And then plant that with trees. I think the wisest move would be deciduous or rather coniferous-type trees, pine trees, something that would maintain their foliage all winter. Outside of that, there's 1,000 feet or more of natural buffer of prairie grasses and cattails in between this site and this Grand Prairie Estates and the Grand Prairie neighborhood. I can't imagine a better site in Sioux Falls with this much distance in between the proposed use and the proposed impacts.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioners?
Hello. My name is Janine Lubin, 27181 Baker Place here in Sioux Falls. I pray you'll bear with me. I've never been in this environment, and I'm sure my nerves will show. But I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about what this business is, why we're doing it, and then address some of the concerns that the neighbors have brought forward to us, because we would really like to work with this neighborhood and come up with a plan that's good for everybody. So what we're really aiming to do is create a very upscale pet resort in this neighborhood. We've spent a lot of time researching kennels, cleaning solutions, HVAC systems. We want this to be a premier pet care facility. And it really was spurred through me and my husband wanting to open a business that would create a constant revenue stream that we could donate to some really great organizations. Thus the name, Paws for a Cause Pet Resort. So with that said, I'll jump right into some of the objections or concerns that we've had. Of course, like Joel mentioned, the biggest being the noise. And the biggest potential for noise is when the dogs are outside. So I just want to address that right off the start. There are certain kennels that allow the pets to go in and out 24 hours a day, in and out of the building. That is not what we've chosen to do here. Our pets will be completely controlled, meaning when they have access to go outside, it will be because an employee has been there and opened that door for the pets and is physically accompanying them outside. Once the pets are outside, we have created, as you can see, multiple small play yards so that we never have a large, chaotic group of dogs outside. And we have a plan to continually have an employee out there with those dogs so that it just never has a chance to get real rowdy and out of control. Or if we have a very talkative dog, someone who is a real barker, an employee is out there, they can remove that dog, take it back inside before it riles up the rest of the group, and perhaps let that dog be outside at a more one-on-one basis. As far as times of when dogs have access to be outdoors, our first out of the day is going to be somewhere between that 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. timeframe. And this is not a time when the dogs are going to go outside to play and have their free time. This is get them outdoor in the morning, let them do their elimination. We can address any issues of cleaning that we have inside of their kennel, and then we bring them back in for their food and their breakfast for the day. The next time the dogs are going to have an opportunity to be outside is around that 12 o'clock timeframe. And hopefully, this is a time when the dogs can be outside enjoying themselves a little bit more, still with that supervised play, still with someone out there monitoring the volume of what's happening. The next opportunity the dogs will have to be outdoors is between that 4 o'clock and 5 o'clock timeframe. We'll get them out there, let them get a little fresh air, bring them back in. They'll have their supper, and at that time, their food and water is pulled. So they will get one more opportunity after that in that 7:30 to 8 o'clock range to go back outside and do their elimination. Again, that time is not a time for outdoor play. It's a time to let the animals out, do their business, and get them back in and settle down for the night. So those are the regular times these animals would have an opportunity to be outside and barking. As far as the pool, I can't tell you for sure when that will come. We would love to have that be part of Phase 1 and build that pool right away. Budget-wise, I guess we will just have to see how that all comes together. It might be one year or two years before that is in play. But that pool area, as I hope you can tell from the picture there, is not something that those pets have continual access to. That is divided off with a fence, and it is a very shallow splash-and-play type of pool. I see this being used in those hot summer months and during the day. This is not something that the dogs are going to have access to well out into the evenings. The other area of noise would be noise coming from inside of our building, which we've taken several precautions to try to soundproof as much as possible. Like Joel said, it is a new building with great quality windows and siding. I don't feel there's going to be any crossover noise. But one way that we've tried to manage that is you can walk into some kennels, and in the back of the house, it's one large, almost machine shed type of situation. And all the dogs that they house are in one room. They feed off of each other. It's very loud, and it's very chaotic. And that is not how this building is set up. We've taken more of a pod-like approach. So we have multiple rooms in the back that are going to be set up with two rows of kennels. Those kennels face outward, so the dogs can't sit and talk to the neighbor across the aisle from them. And that really cuts down on the stress for the dogs. It cuts down on the noise for the employees and any noise that might carry through to Another concern that was brought up when I had a chance to talk with some of the neighbors last night was just the size and the capacity of our building. When we built this building, we did work really hard to make it aesthetically pleasing so it would fit into what's already there and the existing use of the space. It is a very nice-looking building, but it is a big building. And that just speaks to, again, how we've set up the back of our building with the multiple rooms. So it is a 10,000-square-foot building. It is big, but capacity-wise, it's really not any larger than the other similar kennels that are already in town. We have the capacity to hold 77 kennels, which has the potential, you know, just to be, to be very clear, it has the potential to have even more dogs than that. We may have a situation where a family comes in and with like two small dogs boarded together. So we have 77 kennels. Just to be transparent, that could translate to more dogs than that at a busy time of the year. But do keep in mind with that that kennels typically run 50% to 60% of occupancy. So on a normal daily basis, we are talking more like 40 dogs, give or take, at this facility. And then we'll have those surges during peak times where we could have 77 dogs or perhaps even a few more than that. But those times are pretty limited. The other thing I will say is we are very open to working with the residents across the way from us, whether it be berms or trees. We really want to keep that discussion going. Up until tonight, we hadn't had a lot of suggestion other than just moving our business. They said, "We love what you're doing. We love the concept. We just would really like it to be a couple miles down the road." So I just wanted to address real quick how we landed where we are. When we started looking for land a couple of years ago, we did contact the city and found out what our zoning requirements would be. And we looked at a lot of land inside the city, and as Joel mentioned, there just is not a space like this available to us. So when we found this piece of land, we did check with the zoning. Everything checked out. It had been zoned that way for quite some time. We checked with the one neighbor we did have a relationship with that was in 1,000 feet, and that seemed to go okay with a little hesitation, but okay. And we did since purchase that land. So that is why we haven't been real open to just the idea of moving this business. We do already own this piece of property. So whatever happens here tonight, whether we're approved and can move forward or whatever may happen, we would really like to keep the conversation going with Grand Prairie Estates and work. and work with them. We want to fit well into this development. We want to service them and their dogs, and we hope in two years, five years, they are really pleased that we're there and providing this service for them. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, what other types of animals would you be boarding, or is it just strictly dogs?
We'll also board cats. We're going to have one room. It is a small room. It has the capacity to hold 10 cats, but no other animals.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I didn't mention is we will be doing daycare at this facility as well. That is just during business hours from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. Those dogs do not stay there overnight, just daycare. And we will also offer grooming there as well during business hours.
Very good. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 10?
Brad, if you want to help me assist on the pictures on the deal, I'll give you the talking. And I also did, I did a letter with some attachments that I'd like to gift everyone.
Move up to the microphone, please, so we can introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening.
My name is Melissa Nicholson-Bright. I am currently building a house in the Grand Prairie Estates neighborhood, so my current address is 3809 South Bedford Avenue, Sioux Falls. However, I will be living on Lot 7 in the Grand Prairie Estates. Didn't realize I only have five minutes, so apologize for going quickly. My letter will, and a lot of the exhibits with it, will highlight some of the concerns, and frankly, I'll run out of time here tonight. Couple of things. First of all, is we found out about this because there were signs, yellow signs, that some of the neighbors saw. Very short timeframe. No time to discuss with the others, no time to try to work things out. They wanted to proceed with the hearing, and so we needed to gear up and be ready to be here to state some of the concerns. Not opposed to trying to talk with them, but they were insistent the meeting go forward. Couple of questions legally I have is, one, the notice provisions are fairly stringent for this meeting and the notice required. I have not seen the proof that they have complied with that. They've got to post the signs. They've got to file a certificate verifying that they've posted the signs. They need to give written notice to adjacent property owners within 300 feet, a postmark 10 days before the hearing. I have not seen that. They need to publish in the newspaper the hearing date, time, and location at least 10 days in advance. I don't know that that has happened. I haven't seen proof of that. Further, I would assume, when you look at the city code, two issues. We've got the whole issue of the kennel, the zoning, the conditional use, exceptions, et cetera, but we also have the keeping of animals within the city limits. So I assume that both would need to be complied with. I haven't seen any proof or any testimony as to keeping of animals in the city. There's an ordinance, Section 90.008. Keeping of animals on any personal land in the city shall not be on the scale, creating a nuisance. Next, subpart, maximum number of six animals may be kept on personal land in the city. However, it can be increased by obtaining a license issued by the city. I've not had any knowledge that this license has been obtained, and I think that that would be probably a prerequisite before we'd even get to the conditional use subject, because why go forward with building unless that's been satisfied? All applicants for this license must be accompanied by a written consent of 100% of the owners of all real estate located within 100 feet of the applicant's real estate. So that's all applicants. I don't know that that's been done. I find that to be another thing that needs to be satisfied or a finding needs to be done, that that needs to be complied with or not. When you get to the issue of kennels, there's, and I might, and I will say too, I'm going to run out of time, but the state statute, the city ordinance, and the Shape Sioux Falls Community Plan all lay out specific guidelines for the creation of zoning in a city. They're very specific that the vision of the city needs to be protected, and starting with state statute, regulations shall be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan to promote health and the general welfare. Such regulations shall be made with reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of the district, suitability for particular uses, with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout such a municipality, with emphasis on the most appropriate use. Burden is on the person who's trying to deviate from the ordinances to prove why they should be granted that request. When you look at the shape, and just to jump to the facts real quick, because I know I'm going to run out of time here, we do disagree. Our development falls within 1,000 feet. I want to be clear on that. Some of the other landowners can talk more on that. The pictures that they showed were misleading. I'd like to show a couple of pictures that would indicate the view from our development to Cliff Avenue with the building being proposed to be built within this picture and within the boundaries. And so their version of it and our version of it differs, as I'm sure you can imagine. The berm is only to the north. There is not room because our property abuts conservation land. There's natural habitat within that land. Deer, the other members can talk about all that, what they see running through there that would be disrupted by a lot of dogs barking. We've been told the capacity of this is 70 to 100 dogs. They will be there not only during business hours. It's boarding overnight. It's boarding on weekends. We've got a man-made lake in our development, and the tranquility of that, you want to be able to sit out on your deck or whatnot, or be in the pond at, you know, sunset, sunrise, weekends, and so forth, without the possibility that there will be, you know, a lot. I mean, 70 to 100 dogs is a lot of dogs. Now, you know, and when dogs get in groups, I don't know, I mean, to analogize to teenage girls, when you're in a group, you make more noise, even if they're not taking them all out at the same time. If you just think logically about dogs needing to go out, especially needing to be exercised or else they're more flamboyant, et cetera, et cetera, they just need to be out. I mean, we're not against dogs, per se. We're just thinking, the plan seems idealistic, not realistic. These people haven't operated a kennel before, to my knowledge. We're talking about structures, a house, that are essential and that were provided the most property guarantees and rights in the privacy and sanctity of your home of any property that exists, and a beneficial but a non-essential structure. And I would ask the question, where else in Sioux Falls do we have a kennel located this close to not only existing residential property but also proposed residential property? And when you look at the Shape Sioux Falls with particularity to the Shape Communities, Shape Neighborhoods, Shape Transitions, the Future Land Use Map, and the explanations, there are so many protections in those and word choices that favor the landowner, the homeowner, that I'm not going to have a chance, I'm not going to have enough time to go through. I've provided a lot of those to you. But just one, very specifically, to look at the Future Land Use Map, and you've got, you should have a copy of that. They propose, there's a lot of residential that is going to be constructed that has not yet. So those people can't really even be a part of this, but soon will be because our city is, we're fortunate to have the growth that we have. The area that this is zoned for is proposed to be a business park. And if you look at the Future Land Use objective, which by state statute and city ordinance, you have to consider when you make this decision, the business park objective is the intent of the land uses within this area is to create a buffer from the highway noise and to develop land uses nearest the roadway that are noise-compatible and transition to low-density residential areas. And so the very objective is not being met. And this is Zone C2 right now, but you've got a lot of residential right around it. You've got, and if you read the Transition section of the Shape Sioux Falls Plan, you'll notice specifically, they talk about what is compatible next to what. And so if you were next to maybe a C1, and they were trying to get a deviation from this, a conditional use permit next to a C1, well, you know, maybe that would be a little easier to swallow, but they're trying to deviate not only from, I mean, if you look at the criteria to get a conditional use permit for a kennel in a C2, they are stringent. You go to permissive uses, they're not a permissive use. They're a special permissive use.
Excuse me, Ms. Nicholson. Are you going to be the only one speaking on behalf of this item for the neighborhood?
Um...
At this point, I'd let you go four minutes over the five minutes, so that's over nine minutes. So I'm going to have to ask you to...
I will give her five seconds.
Anyone else? Because I'll let you keep going if you're the only one that's going to be speaking on behalf of the neighborhood.
I have a tough question, but you can go on right now. Just one, as far as how we're specifying. May I?
Okay.
Okay.
I can, I can wrap it up here pretty shortly, too.
Just, we have probably nine people from the neighborhood, so we could all raise our hand and give her time. I don't think anybody else is really going to speak. Maybe one or two minutes, and that would be it.
Okay, I'm just, I want to give you the time to keep going, but I need to be respectful that I can't let everybody go double time.
I, and thank you. I didn't realize it was only five minutes, and I do want to keep this moving for you guys.
Okay, so your choice. You can continue, or if you're about to wrap, that's great, too. Whichever way you want to do it.
I can attempt to wrap it up real quickly. So if I look to, I'm sorry, I was saying, okay, so, so when you look at the land use transitions, it's harder to swallow being next to residential. And you know, you talk about what's in between. What it is, it's conservation land. Right now, it's for, I assume it's for drainage for the city of Sioux Falls, but it also, by virtue of the code, again, you look at the definition of each of these zones, you know, the C2, C1, there's specifically one for conservation. And if you look at the conservation definition, it specifically talks about protecting the animal habitat. And so there's many, you know, animals in there, too. And I mean, you get a bunch of dogs around, it's going to scare off the deer, the birds, the wildlife, et cetera, which arguably is one very valid concern in addition to the residential concerns that exist. And so from my standpoint, I don't think there's a, I don't think that there is a kennel being proposed, especially of this size, within this close to a residential neighborhood. And the issue is, if it's a nuisance or detrimental to adjacent properties, then it should not be granted. And that's in addition to, I guess what I was, what I was saying is, when you have a conditional use request for a kennel in a C2, first of all, a kennel is not a permissive use in a C2. If you go to special permissive uses, you see a definition that a kennel has to be over 1,000 feet from designated forms, which would include residential dwelling. And so that, that's what kicks us here, is because they're not over 1,000. And there's probably some to come that, that aren't in existence today. So then, not only are you under the, not only permissive uses, special permissive uses, they still don't fit that. So then they apply for the conditional use permit on, on top of that. So it's like a layer upon a layer upon a layer of exception to get this. And then they say, okay, well, you can't do the, you can't grant a conditional use permit if the proposed use is going to be a detriment or, not and, detriment or nuisance to adjacent property. Well, nuisance, if you look up the, if you look up the definition of nuisance under the South Dakota Code, is a pretty liberal meaning. And so I think that's a whole issue in itself that could take another discussion here tonight, but if it annoys or interferes with the use of property and other things, arguably also the wetlands, if it interferes with public land, you potentially have a nuisance. And the thing, the issue here is, how do we know what the sound, how do we, that's, that issue is not one that we can know or be satisfied with, will be taken care of. It's just too hard to know with them. And it begs the question, if, if it weren't a concern, why would there be this many protections already built into our city ordinances, state statute, et cetera, really trying to look out for the issue of noise from mass quantities of dogs being together? And so that's the concern of the neighborhood, and that's the concern that I don't think can be taken lightly. I mean, you look at the debacle in the McKennan Park neighborhood with the house that went up. It went up quickly, and now there's problems associated with it that haven't been taken care of. People have spent a lot of time and a lot of money, and I would hate to see that happen.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. I appreciate the comments you're making, the testimony and such. The C2 can support a kennel with conditional use, and that's why we're here tonight to discuss this, so...
I understand.
At this point, if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 10, please feel free to come forward. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Abbott. I live in Grand Prairie's 805 Shadow Creek. And if you see that last, that the owner's presented, I'm on that last street. So I'm a little bit further away than what the Grand Prairie Estates are, but I did have a question, though. The owner's mentioned that as part of this, I guess, zoning permit, they were not planning to actually let the animals out during night. So is that language specifically stated in that zoning permit that future plans will restrict them from doing that? Or is that up to their discretion?
This particular conditional use does not have that language on the documentation at this time.
Okay. So in the future, it can be up to their discretion if they choose to let animals out during the night?
Unless it is made a condition, and that is possible with this process.
Because I would definitely have concerns with that. Moving from Texas, they had similar places that were in retail locations, and the retail places were more than 1,000 feet away, and you could definitely hear from a decimal standpoint, the noise. So that's why having little kids, I definitely wanted to clarify that point, and if they would have that ability to make that adjustment in the future. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the, oh, guess not, no. Were there any questions from the Commissioner? Sorry, thank you. Sir?
Good evening. Tom Olsh Jr., Sioux Falls, 800 East Clearwater Place. I'm a resident out there. Changed my flight to be here tonight. I'm sure most of you got my email, a forward from Diane. My, my biggest concern is how fast this has came down the pike. When we talk about the notice, if you drive down Cliff currently, the sign is hidden behind the black fence, so the public cannot see it. Secondly, I had to talk with the developer yesterday, and I respect him. He's a good man. And I asked for this meeting to be pushed back so we had proper time to address this. They would not take that into consideration. We, as our development, want to work, and we all are business, pro-business people. We don't think this is the best place for it, and we certainly would like to see it somewhere else, but we also want to have input if it isn't a go. And right now, they aren't taking our input. We, I asked them to put something together and get it to our association yesterday, and they said, "No, you tell us what you want." It isn't our job to tell them what, how they're going to protect us. It's their job to tell us how they're going to protect us from their business. So with that, the last thing I'd like to say, we're talking 77 dogs to 120, could be 140. They're saying one hour to go out and let the dogs out. I don't know how many of you have dogs. I do. I love them, but it takes more than a minute to go let them do their duty. So we're talking, they're saying 7:00 to 8:00, they're going to be out noon, 4:00 to 5:00, and then 7:30 to 8:00. That timeframe is not reasonable. It, it just won't work. And if it is reasonable, and they're bringing out 10 dogs together, you know there isn't going to be noise. And when you look at our developer, from their west, from going west from their pool, it is wetlands out there, so that noise will travel. That's where our runoff comes from, our pond. And so that will affect our livelihood and our value of our property, and so I would like you to consider that. So, thank you. Any questions?
Commissioners? Okay, thank you. Anyone else for item number 10? Good evening, sir.
Chris Pappas, 474-8885th Street, I live just south, Brad, if you could, I live, nope, right there, yes, right there, and what concerns me is, I never even got notice, and I'm clearly within a thousand feet of the development, proposed development, no mail was received with notice, and my greatest concern is that with that water, between not only myself, but my neighbors, and the potential developed property that we have adjacent to my home, that dog kennel might as well be in my backyard, because that noise will carry across that water like a magnifying glass. On a calm night, you can hear people whispering across the lake, and it's just a big concern, and I wasn't even notified, which I think is kind of unusual. Any questions?
No. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I gave up his time.
My name's Travis Liddell, I'm currently at 1005 Golden Eagle Street in Sioux Falls. We recently purchased the lot, you can put that back up, we're actually on the northeast corner, and when that line is drawn, showing 1,067 feet to the very, very edge of our property, that's my lot they're referencing there, and I would, I had a couple of concerns, really three main points. First is, I spoke with Mr. Ingle, who seems like a very nice gentleman, we actually considered buying a lot from him, which is the one just to the southeast of that, of that lot, and we had a very long discussion about the future plans for the area, I asked him very specific questions about specifically the field next door, the highway going to the north, and I was never told anything about a dog kennel, and he claims this has been in the works for a very long time, and so I guess my question to him would be, if this is not a concern at all, then we should not be concerned, and why was that never told to me, as something that's going in 1,067 feet across an open, empty field, that could potentially be something that I should know about, and that was not disclosed to me at any point, and again, this was a very long conversation, that was my most, my biggest concern in this area before deciding to invest, because anybody that's done recent, looking for lots that are, that are nice and can accommodate some nice homes with the slightest bit of privacy in Sioux Falls, there's not a lot available in Sioux Falls anymore, and this was one of the few options open to my wife and I, and ultimately, we, we, we literally researched this property for two years before finally deciding to purchase in the area, and we're very excited about that, and not even having our basement completed, we're finding out that there's a kennel going across this field, that again, I'm being told is, we're 67 feet out of this, this range, that people have decided is far enough to basically not really hear our concerns, I know you're hearing our concerns tonight, I appreciate that, but according to ordinance, a thousand feet is the cutoff, and we're just slightly over that. I have been in there, been out there several times, and again, the photo that was shown earlier, I take a little exception to that, because that's shown from the very southeast lot, I know that lot very well, that is not our, or not that picture, the one that was taken from the development, looking out at that, is not our lot, our lot, again, is the closest one, and he's, seems to have chosen to go to the one that's the farthest south on that side of the development to take that picture. Additionally, the picture taken from where the dog kennel will be, which is this one, I believe, going out that way, you can't see our home here, because it's just a basement right now, but our home is sitting on, on this side of a pond and a large yard, and will be the, probably the closest house to this dog kennel, and I have a lot of concerns. In all honesty, I think what they've described as the business model sounds like a wonderful idea, I'm a dog lover myself, as is my wife, you would have me, in all honesty, if we were talking about 20 dogs, and this was a day, a doggy daycare, this is 77 spots and up to 140 dogs, and that's gonna be when it's busy, which I'm gonna guess is gonna be 4th of July, Memorial, most of the summer when people are on vacation, that's when they're gonna be the busiest, when my family and I are gonna be, are gonna try to be outside and join the property in the neighborhood. And the only thing I, other thing I take exception to that I'd like to point out, is this comment gets made, and it's been thrown in my face a couple times in our conversation so far that I've had personally with the developer, and that's that, this Highway 100 is going there, and we knew that was going there, so we shouldn't have any complaints, because, you know, there's gonna be cars going by, it's gonna be a busy street. Well, I think anyone on this panel that's reasonable can tell that there's a difference between a darkened bog, a dog, all day long in your, in your ear, compared to the low hum of, of cars going by on the highway, and we've made that decision, and we're willing to accept Highway 100 going across a berm, and again, the berm, the only berm, only side that doesn't have a berm is the side that most closely faces their kennel, and so for them to claim that there's three berms, and as that's, as that's a positive point for them building this, seems actually completely counterintuitive, because only, because they're building it on the one side of our development that doesn't have it. So I guess I just take exception to the fact that because I've, I'm willing to accept the low hum of traffic going by our house, I'm, I should therefore be willing to accept 77 to 140 dogs barking across, again, what is an open field. We have been out there on football Saturdays, University of Sioux Falls is farther to the east and to the north, and I can hear, before the music starts, I can hear the, the tailgating and the party, or the, the people talking as they're going into the stadium, this is not with the loudspeakers, and I'm okay with that, we made that decision as well, we went out there to check it out on a Saturday when there was a game, and we were okay with that, because again, that's a few hours on a Saturday, and I know it's gonna be limited, but this is going to be all day and all night, and there, like we've just, the last gentleman pointed out, there's no real guarantee that they couldn't decide after that you've let, let them build here, that they are not gonna double the size of their building, and add even more spots if they're busy, or that they're not gonna need to let some of the dogs out at night, because they've got 140 dogs now, I mean, think about how many, how much, how long it takes to put 140 dogs out at a time. I was in vet school for a short time, before changing to medical school, I worked in dog kennels, I know the amount of time it takes to take these dogs out, and so I guess those are just things I'd, I'd like to point out, and additionally, when, you know, they're talking about ways that they can improve the, the, the build, the building itself, it seems like they've actually positioned the outdoor kennels on the side that's directly facing our houses, so it seems like they've actually gone, you know, as opposed to having it on the north side, or the roadside, which may not look as aesthetic, but might protect these people across the field, they're putting it on the side of the building that faces the open field, and again, faces our houses. So I guess those are the things that I would just like to have considered, and I really appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns, and I think just lastly, I guess I would say, if they had, if they had a dog kennel similar to this, a thousand feet from their house, and this was their second franchise in town, then I'd probably be, but I'm guessing that they're not, they don't have any plans to put a dog kennel within a thousand feet, or 1,067 feet from, from their house in the near future, so that's it, I really appreciate your time, I'll wait for questions, because it seems like that's the format.
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay, thank you again.
Very much. Anyone else would like to speak, item number 10?
Hi, my name's Audra Stensel, I live at 5700 Josh Wyatt Drive, we own a lot, we're about to begin. Excuse my nervousness, I'm just a stay-at-home mom, I'm not used to speaking in front of crowds, but since I got a babysitter for my kids tonight, I thought I should say at least why I'm concerned enough to be here. If anyone's ever been irritated by a neighbor's dog barking while they're trying to get an extra hour asleep, or tried to enjoy a nice dinner in the backyard, imagine if that neighbor had 50 to 100 dogs. We're planning our dream house, part of that dream was never having dinner to the chorus of 50 to 100 dogs barking. I'll just keep it short and sweet, thanks.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
My name is Brad Ruby, 708 East Clearwater Place, I live in the Grand Prairie, and I was just going to try to clear up a couple of the pictures that they've shown, so, on this picture right here, where they showed their picture, there is a fair amount of trees right here. The picture that they showed, there's a fair amount of established trees along Chris Pappas' land and our development, if you go any further north, where all of that wetlands is, the developer did not put any berm in, or any trees in, because we had 40 acres of wetlands there, so they did not put any berm along that entire side, so very clearly, there's a, a large berm on the north side, the west side, and the south side, there's zero berm of any type on the east side, and there is some established trees where that green area is, but you can see where the wetland starts there, and we have several pictures that, that as of this point, there is no trees there at all. I'm not trying to reiterate any thing that's been said before, but anybody that's lived anywhere by water, that, that's wetlands, the city considers, considers it's conservation land, there will be no development there, you can hear anything, you hear all the ducks over there chapping at night, we love that, that's why we bought there, but the idea that that natural wetlands, even though it is a thousand feet, is any type of barrier to sound between that and our development, certainly would have to be addressed in the future, because as of now, there's no sound barrier there at all, and you can hear everything that goes on over there. I had one more, I can't think of it, I don't think I'll waste any more of your time, any questions?
Commissioners?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, again, new testimony for the commission on item number 10?
Sir, could I just offer my letter with the attachments as an exhibit?
I, we have copies of that, yes, isn't that what you already handed out?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure if there is an official record that I offered it, so that it was part of it.
Yep, they were received.
Thank you.
Yep. At this point, I'd like the, either the owner or the petitioner to come back up and address some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. As stated, some people were frustrated, they did not feel that they had a forum to hear or understand what mitigation things may be going on, I'd like to see if you could...
Could you, there is a lot of things, I mean, there are a lot of things in there, is there anything specific that I could address?
Well, I'm gonna have, I might have staff address concerns of lack of notice, which I don't, let's do that one first, sorry, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. Notice is really pretty easy, the notice is accurate, and it's efficient, we send out the notice from our office to all the property owners in the area within the 300 feet, so that was correct, the signs were posted, they saw the signs, the signs were posted in the accurate time, and again, it's posted in the newspaper in accurate time, so that everybody was in attendance tonight to this meeting, so the notice is absolutely correct, and it's in time, so that everybody can get to the meeting. The, I think the real specific question to clarify, and trying not to offend anybody, it, it, it's not the 300 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, or 2,000 feet, at a conditional use, that's not the issue, they're all here, and you're taking all their testimony. Planning commissioners, you understand, and I'm really saying this more for our stakeholders at home, and the people in the audience, whether you're within 50 feet or five miles of this project, you're being heard tonight, and your testimony is going on record, so it's not like you didn't hear them because they were at 2,500 feet away, I mean, it's, it's all being publicly recorded, and it's heard, so that doesn't give them more credence or less credence, because they're closer or further away. So it's a conditional use, the public hearing's tonight, so that's being taken care of, there was public notice, everybody's here, you get to vote, you can approve, you can deny. So, the other thing is, really, that I'd like to clarify, is in regards to the conditional use, just about every one of the items that you had on regular agenda tonight were conditional uses. The applicants, everybody that's seen these tonight, you went through, I think, four or five of them before, the issues that they've brought up tonight were conditional uses, this is a conditional use, and in regards to abatement, addressing issues, adding conditions, nuisances, see where I'm going with this, you approved them all tonight, even though they were permissive, or permitted special, or conditional, you just addressed them tonight. So, how I always look at that, again, for everybody on record, is that you can add conditions or you can approve them, it's basically a use that's allowed here with conditions, and even the ones that you saw already tonight, you approved them, and you could have stopped and approved any of them with conditions, and this is the same one that you have here. You can deny it also, but the point is, on this one, if there's conditions you'd like to address in regards to the sound, if there's issues you'd like to address in regards to drainage, any of those things, but specifically, the conditional use standard in the staff report for kennel, is that it should be located in areas where the noise generated by the use would not be a nuisance or detrimental to the adjacent properties. Other buffers, such as walls, berms, and landscaping, may be required in separating the kennel operation from adjacent property owners, so that's what you're addressing with the conditional use.
Mr. Chair?
Two questions for you, Jeff, one, what, so this is already zone C2, and a lot of the property around here is C2 or C3. What other things could go there?
C2 and C3 are based upon the size of the structures, so the uses that can go there are restaurants, bars, on sale, off sale, alcohol, car lots, retail establishments, a lot of the retail options that they talked about, it's gonna be the size constraint. C1's not even an issue down here, because C1's in a much smaller location, on a much smaller roadway functional classification. C2 and C3 are located on highways and large arterial streets, C2s are those 25,000 square foot structures, and C3s are 75,000 square foot structures, and then all those uses that I listed, that's how big they can go, but basically, retails, bars, restaurants...
Thank you, one, follow-up, Sioux Falls has a noise ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you talk about that just a little bit?
A little bit, again, the issue with the noise is, a lot of the things that we've, I've talked to neighbors about tonight, too, is in regards to lighting, so lighting and noise are interesting, there's always the perceived issue, and there's the actual issue. So, let's specifically answer your question, if there's a noise concern, and the neighbors handled it very well tonight, you are gonna hear it differently across the vacant field on a clear night on a Saturday than some other time, because noise travels, but if you actually went out there and registered, it's probably not a noise violation, but you're, you're gonna hear it, because noise travels. Light's the same way, people go, that light is really blinding me, and you get out there and you go, it's not really a lighting issue, but yes, you can see it. So, the volume of the noise, and where it's a complaint, has to be, Danny's here if he has to correct me, our city attorney, but noise violations are in the 60, 70 decibels, they're loud, not sustained, and it's not gonna be necessarily that you could hear it.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'd have a complaint, you'd call the health department, they'd go out, they'd do a, a reading, and then they'd give you the, whether there's a violation or not. So again, that's one of the things that I think as a kennel you'd look at, is how did they address that indoors versus outdoors, how did they build the structure, what type of landscaping burning, burning, how far away they were from the residents or adjacent properties.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, could we bring up the owner, not the developer, for a question?
Sure.
Jeannie or Janine?
Janine.
Janine, would you have an issue if we put a stipulation that you could not allow the dogs out after 10:00 PM?
No, excuse me, no, e- even earlier than that, we really have no intention at all of letting these animals out at night, I don't want to be there out, at night, I don't think my staff is gonna want to be there at night, so I would be very agreeable to making it even 9:00 PM, or, I, I'm very agreeable to that. And I, I just did want to say that we really did try to make every effort that we knew to make, to make this public knowledge, it is posted on, on every side of the premises out there, and, and I feel Joel did a really good job in doing that for us, and representing us in that way, we, we were not trying to make this on a short notice, and a couple people did bring up the fact that they said we weren't wanting to work with them with this, but that is not the feelings from our side, we did want this to come before you tonight, just in the sake of time, and it is May, and we would like to begin our progress, but we would also like to keep working with these folks, we just don't want any more holdups. So it's not that we're not willing to, to talk with them and work with them, we truly are, we just wanted to keep the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have just one other question, so it sounds like that there was not a neighborhood meeting prior to this hearing?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No. Oh, and one other thing I will say, I, I do think it is very practical that the animals can go in and out in that allotted time, like I said, boarding kennels typically run 50 to 60% occupancy, so you hear some high numbers, like that 70 to 100-plus dogs, that, that's just not the typical, like I said, we have multiple small play yards, it is very practical that we can get those dogs in and out in one hour. They address that we have not run a kennel before, and that is very true, my background is, been completely comprised of business management and marketing, knowing that we've taken a... that we've taken a very aggressive position on who we're hiring. And the person that we've hired to do our day-to-day operations has 15-plus years in the pet care industry. This is what he's done for a very long time and he's done an excellent job of guiding the ship and just setting us up with some real, some realistic expectations of how this will run.
Very good. Any other questions, commissioners, for the owner? Thank you. Very good.
Mr. Chair, just maybe a point of order. Based on what we've heard and Steve asked the question about stipulations, is that the rationale for seeking the conditional use permit approval was built around the business plan and that specifically included times that the dogs would not be out. There was also discussion about berms and noise abatement measures and a desire to work with the neighbors. And it seems like we would be well-served to provide time for that to be the case and defer action on this item this evening and see what comes back. Allow the staff time to deal with the stipulation issues and receive additional input as the owner has indicated they're interested in from the neighbors. I'll make that a motion if that's permissible at this time.
Do I have to finish?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the commission at this time?
I would agree with John there. It just sounds like a lot of the neighbors really have some input and I think there's some things that need to be done for, you know, berms and fences and some stuff to protect the neighbors in case this does move forward that they should probably talk it out a little bit more than where we're currently at.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I disagree with that. I mean, I take a look at the location we're in and the 1,100 feet or so to the closest folks that are here tonight that would be affected, the closest people across cliff seem to be fine with it. A neighborhood meeting would have comprised of those folks who they did meet. I mean, we have the 300-foot circle is who gets notified because I think that's what the city defines as the most impacted people are who should be notified. So, I, I mean, I appreciate that there's folks that are a ways away that have concerns and want to talk about it. You know, 1,100 feet, we're talking almost four football fields, that's a long ways away. So, I, I'm more inclined to support the approval of this project instead of deferring it.
Any other comments to that end?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Sershen. I just feel that they have done a lot of diligence, they've done their stuff. They are willing to make some concessions tonight as to why we should defer it. Like I said, I think that we should go forward with this.
Any other comments at this point? There is a motion and a second on the floor to defer the item, which I would imagine Commissioner Paulson would have said to the next meeting?
Yes.
In June?
Yes.
Which that date happens to be, what, guys?
Second.
June 2nd. Is that accurate, Commissioner Paulson?
No.
For defer to June 2nd would be the motion?
Yeah, that's, that's not the date, it's, it's June, isn't it 6th?
It'd be the 7th.
For the language for the deferment.
It'd be a deferral to Wednesday, June 7th.
7th, okay.
So, Wednesday, June 7th is the motion to defer and that was seconded by Commissioner Lukey, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so first we'll have to take a vote on that. So, all in favor of deferring item number 10 to the Wednesday, June 7th meeting, please signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Kind of close for a vote, so we'll have to do hands. All opposed, or sorry, all in favor of deferral, please raise your hand. Sorry, I'm not voting. One, two, three, four. All opposed?
We break the tie.
There is a tie.
There is a tie.
Okay, at this point, I, I do feel that the owners and the developer is here to address concerns that could arise from not having the berms, not having the barriers, not having the construction, but that's something that can move forward in my opinion. I think they want to work with the neighbors, so I would vote to not defer this and I will look for other commission action at this point to move this forward.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve item number 10, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, I'll stick with what I said before, that I think this is a great location for a kennel. It's on cliff and Highway 100. It's, you know, I think there's going to be a lot of other commercial stuff out there that this would fit with. I would like to amend the motion to add the stipulation that no dogs are outside between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Okay, very good.
And my second is for that amendment.
So, we have had a motion and a second on the primary motion to approve item number 10. There has been amended motion to add the stipulation that the dogs will not be outside between the hours of 6, or 9:00 PM in the evening to 6:00 AM in the morning. Any further discussion on that?
I think that alleviates a lot of the concerns with the neighbors. I mean, if you think a dog, being outside at night in the summer is always fun, not so much in the winter in South Dakota, but it keeps those nighttime hours quiet and then allows dogs to be outside during the day.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so...
Do we need to, I mean, look at any berms or fences or anything like that to also put on there to try to cut back on some of the sound?
Probably do that with another amendment after this one is approved or denied.
I just think, you know, a lot of the things that came up were sound-related and I think, you know, adjusting the hours of operation for the dogs to be out will help, but there's still some people that basically might work, you know, night and day, you know, different timeframes that could be affected too, so...
No, very good. So, then Commissioner Lukey, how would we address a C2 berm beyond what is already required?
Mr. Chair, I think we should take action on the amendment and then if Commissioner Lukey wants to do another amendment, he can do that.
Okay, so at this point, we have the amended condition for item number 10 for the hours of, for the hours the dogs would be outside, but to not include the hours of 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. They'll pretty up that writing, trust me, on that. So, no further discussion on that. All in favor of approval of that conditional use amendment, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
Yes.
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 Roll call again.
Could, could we please go to a show of hands for who voted no to the amendment?
There was three. Thank you. And yes is, were the majority? Very good. Okay, so, that amendment has passed. Thank you for the point of order. Commissioner Lukey, any ideas on your thoughts with your conditional use amendment? Do we want to call staff forward to remind us what...
Currently what, you know, would be in between?
Is there a question or...
What's the current requirement for the, for the berm or the landscape units at the current C2?
There is none.
There isn't a current requirement for any landscaping or berming. You do a three-to-one slope on any berms. So typically, what we do is on a 10-foot landscaping strip, you do basically a two-foot berm. So, if you want to do a full four-foot berm, that's when we were going to the 15-foot and then we were doing the 30-foot landscaping area when we were doing a six-foot berm. So, it's really evergreen trees, but the berming helps sometimes with the drainage or constricts the drainage. I'm hesitant to give you a lot of direct, if you want to construct or impact the noise issues here, you may want to say, can there be coniferous trees added to the west side of the property line in such a fashion that the planning staff approves it? Or do you want a six-foot fence? I mean, Larry, it's, excuse me, planning commissioners, what are you looking for? Is it a six-foot berm? Is it a four-foot berm? Is it a six-foot fence? Is it evergreens? Is it, what, what is going to address your noise issue? And again, if you don't know for sure, then you kind of say, "We want a landscaping plan that's approved by staff that includes..."
Mr. Chair, I mean, what would a level A buffer yard be?
Level A buffer yard would be 10-feet area with a two-foot berm.
So, a two-foot berm at over 1,200 feet is...
So, like a, I mean, two feet, I mean, would get up a little bit. I mean, putting like a fence with like, you know, in the past, we've talked about in Lincoln County, they had baffling that goes on, the fencing to help cut down that. I don't know if they have a product out there that would take care of that, that wouldn't look real bad. I don't know if you guys have looked into...
Larry, the testimony's closed, if you want, need to talk to the chair to call somebody up to the podium.
Would you like the owner to come back up to the stand?
Yes.
So, I think what you're asking there is, could we do more with the fencing that we have proposed there that's attached to the building?
Yep.
Okay. So, right now, the plan for that is it's a six-foot high fence, but it is chain link. It is like a brown chain link fencing. We did look at more of a solid fencing product and that was significantly more expensive, so we did not go with that. As far as the berm and the trees, I think that's something that we're very willing to do. You know, the trees will beautify our land there. Maybe Joel can speak to what that would mean budget-wise for us. I'm not sure what building a berm like that would do cost-wise, but as long as it's reasonable, we're very open to that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any thoughts then on... Thank you. I'm sorry, testimony's closed from the public. She's the owner and we had to, we had to get her input on this.
Mr. Chair, while Larry's contemplating this and excuse the pun, but we're coming up with a different animal here in regards to the conditional use and stipulations that don't have the benefit of staff recommendations or engagement of the parties that have expressed an interest in working together. And that was my rationale for recommending deferral and allow the time that would exist then to accomplish that.
Thank you, Commissioner Paulson. I guess to that end, the staff recommendation for item number 10 came down as it was written and they didn't necessarily see that that was necessary. Any other thoughts from the commission on enhancing the conditions for conditional use permit for item number 10?
Mr. Chair, as he's contemplating that, you know, as I look at this, to me, I think we've already done the biggest move to help prevent kind of the objectionable noise late at night, things like that. I have a few neighbors that have more than one dog, they let them out in their yard and that's a good 50 feet away from me and I know how loud that can be. I think anyone that has a kind of a realistic expectation of being out in the country, there are some dog noise, that's a fairly regular thing to hear. I understand the concern about a larger concentration of dogs in this specific area. I think the owner has talked about some of the ways that they can help to mitigate that and mitigate those concerns and I think this, this still makes a lot of sense in this location as Commissioner Sershen has asserted. And so, I think this makes a lot of sense to try and apply a berm or a fence, I think is likely going to have limited effects to the actual sound control in my professional opinion. I think we've already done the biggest move to really help offset that in my opinion, so I'm still in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last call for any amendments.
I take it it's professional opinion, very, you know, sincere, just because that's what you do on a daily basis. Is there any, I mean, anything that you think that could professionally be done tree-wise that would help with that or...
Well, I think from past experience, you have to have a pretty thick conifer buffer to really make an effect on the amount of sound that comes through them, so that is a challenge. I think it would take a pretty good stand of trees to really make a significant effect, especially, you know, there's concerns about it being fairly open between this location and the other residences. They do have the option to put up some trees in their own yard, that would help some too. But, you know, ultimately, to try and put this stipulation on this piece of property, I think it would have limited effects and like I said, by limiting the hours, I think we've already made the most significant effect on the final result.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would agree that I do think that's a great stipulation to have and to add. I do agree with that. However, I do think the reason for the support for the deferral was to have maybe just a little bit more discussion and conversation on those buffers and get clarity on that. So, that, that was the reason that I was in support of that and will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, commissioners. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I would just add, I agree with Commissioner Anderson. Where I'm coming down to is we've had some tough calls on land use, although I agree, I mean, this is going to be intersection where there is going to be businesses and it sounds like the landowners around there have their minds wrapped around that. It's one thing to be next to a business office or even a retail establishment where you have traffic noises, but for me, it comes down to nuisance and the noise. And so, that's why I voted for deferral to see if there were any other options as well, so...
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and I appreciate some of those, but I think other things you're going to see in this area, like Jeff talked about, are bars or restaurants that most likely will have an outdoor patio that could be open until 1:00 AM and I think that would be a much more intensive use than what we're talking about here. I actually think this is better than that would be. And those would happen without conditional use for the most part.
Any other comments? Okay, at this point, we have an amended approve, sorry, an approved amendment to the motion originally to approve item number 10. So, at this point, I will call the vote for approval for the amended item number 10. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Did it again, you guys. Okay. In listening to all the testimony and all of the concerns, I sincerely hope that with the caliber of property that's being developed with this, with Grand Prairie, that South Dakota 100, when it's developed, is really truly a subtle murr. I mean, I'm more than a mile from I-29 and it is not subtle. It is tire noise that just runs right up the hill on the west side, it seems like. So, I hope, I hope that... And so I hope, I hope that is true, that you won't experience that in that neighborhood. As far as this, this, the kennel, the conditional use for it, I agree with Vice Chair Irvin in that we've made the biggest step forward, I think, into mitigating significant nuisance, if there would be one, from the operations of this kennel. So consideration that it has been Zone C2, it is going to be a retail center. I also tend to agree with Commissioner Searson's assertion that there are other more potentially nuisance items that would go into a retail center like this that could have longer hours even. I'm going to vote to approve item number 10. Item number 10 is approved.
Item 11, 6603, 2017, alternative site plan for an alternative sign plan located south of West Lake Shore Boulevard and west of South Marion Road.
I'll give just a minute for the people to exit the room. All right, the applicant here is Steve Van Buskirk with Van Buskirk Companies, and the owner is Cindy Friesen with Friesen Development for the Lake Lorraine POPUD Alternative Sign Plan. The property is located east of West 32nd Street and South Marion Road. It's a 131-acre commercial office and residential development located around, located around Lake Lorraine. The developer is updating the location of their wall tenant facade and gateway entrance signs to reflect the development plan that was reviewed and approved by this body last month. The applicant has provided the necessary signage alternative plans to indicate that they are architecturally and aesthetically compatible with the development. Staff feels that the alternative sign plan is consistent with the shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the signage alternative plan ordinance therefore recommends approval of their application. I can answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Diane? Is the petitioner here this evening?
Good evening. Steve Van Buskirk, Van Buskirk Companies, 5800 South Remington Place. Maybe just take any questions if there's, if anyone had any thoughts on what we're presenting tonight?
Commissioners? Great development. It's a great development.
Okay, thank, yeah, thank you.
Nice design.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak regarding item number 11? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion for approval?
To approve?
Second.
Let you choose on that one, Denise. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval of item number 11, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, same sign? Item number 11 is approved. Mr. Chair, we'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second? Any discussion on that? I didn't think so. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
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 We are adjourned. Make it a great night, Sioux Falls.